Looks like it's about five oh four on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. We'll call to order the committee in the whole agenda meeting. We're gonna move appearances down towards the end. And then we'll start right off with administrator updates.
I'll just go when we get to finance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney updates. Okay. City clerk and HR updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a few items on the agenda. First of all, consent agenda item number six, I'd like to remove from the agenda. We'll keep that information until too late in the day today. So the council wasn't able to respond or see the information before I wasn't able to give it out to in advance for the meeting.
unmuted unless it needs to be unmuted.
Okay. Next consent agenda item number thirteen, which is accepting the recommendation of the personnel committee to authorize special pay request for Richard Hogenson and Kenneth Anderson. The council was waiting for a review from Brandon Fitzsimons on this information. And we got that late on Friday. And we specifically had to go over seven items that Brandon had listed that are would be required for special payment to be qualified under the city's existing working agreement. And most of them are already met, like the employees covered by our labor agreement, things like that. The two items that the council needs to judge, and basically I already spoke with the personnel committee about these two items, are number two, an employee performs above and beyond the normal expectations. And three, their performance is based on an emergency or extraordinary circumstance, which means a situation that is unplanned, unscheduled, extraordinary, or catastrophic in nature. And we thought that those two items were met. Other things were that the employee needed to petition the city in writing citing the situation, what was done, why the special payment should be made. The special payment must be based upon the extraordinary circumstances. So this must be approved by the council and they must be done in two separate resolutions. So I have on the agenda, I just said as one. So we'll change that to thirteen A, approving the special pay request for Richard Hogenson and thirteen B, approving there a special request for Ken Anderson. I just wanted to review that with you and if anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
Okay. Then number three, I'd like to request that we remove consent agenda item number eighteen, which is accepting the recommendation to award a position as Public Works Director. Both of the internal candidates, after reviewing their qualifications, were missing one of the qualifications. So we're not ready to appoint anyone to that position at this time, so I'd like to request that be removed. And then consent agenda item number twenty and twenty-one, we did get that letter from Dylan Jendra that I provided each of you a copy of at your desk announcing his resignation. Consent R U B unfinished business number two, I'd like to change the wording of that. It says calling for a special election or primary election, if necessary, I'd like to change the word or to and. So calling for a special election and primary election if necessary. And then I wanted to mention the Mid-Not Open House that's scheduled for tomorrow. And I think Joe's probably gonna review that at his but at his presentation. But also when we were attending that Mid-Not open that Mid-Not meeting, Brandon and I, Mid-Not folks, also let us know they would be willing to come in and make a presentation to the council at the October tenth meeting, if you guys were interested in that. I don't know how many are finally not attending that open house, but you guys can let me know how you feel about that. I don't think it's a bad idea to have them come in and present because even right, it's recorded and people can see it on TV. So I just think that's a good idea. And that is all I have.
All right. Well, I for one would certainly like to see you in the present to us. All right, Finance Director updates.
I really have just the levy will be, I'll be doing a presentation at the six o'clock meeting in regards to the levy. The Finance Committee is recommending for the preliminary levy to be set at four percent. And that does with the four percent levy, we do have a balanced general fund budget. And we will, you know, utilize the remainder of the fall season to go over the general fund budget and utility budget with the council and the Finance Committee. And so you'll see some upcoming presentations, you know, during October and November till when we get the final levy, which will be for on December fifth. And then we do have new business number three with the Two Harbors Housing Redevelopment Propose Levy. And, you know, I don't know if Robin or Ben wanted to discuss, you know, but we did meet. And, you know, our recommendation at this time is to decline that to give the city and Lake County some time to communicate that over the next year and see what we want to do moving forward. You know, this was kind of really new to everybody and, you know, we just don't want to rush into it without really thinking what's best for everybody. So our recommendation for that new business item number three is to decline that initial levy. And we did meet myself and Patty and Rob, Councilwoman Glager, met with Tom and the Chair of the HRA Board. So and, you know, just to discuss that too. So they are aware of that recommendation. Does anybody have any questions?
This doesn't impact the decisions we made as far as that development project though. They are still moving forward.
Correct, yes. And that's all I have.
Is that all?
Yes.
Robin, did you want to speak to the attorney?
I guess Miranda pretty much summed it up. We did have a good, we did have a good discussion with some folks from Lake County. I think that there, I think it's in everybody's best interest to continue that dialogue between the county and the city, as well as the county HRA and the city HRA to see, I don't know, I guess, where our interests lie and what's best for for everybody involved. We certainly didn't want to put project on hold. We did come up with some funding that will help Tom with his future endeavors that we can use from, help me out Miranda revolving.
Yeah, we have a revolving loan fund that is utilized for projects.
So we felt so after reviewing what had happened with the meeting that we were at and then having Tom come in and talk with Miranda and Patty and I, we did offer that and I think that that will be a good starting point for them. So it's not going to impede their progress. So I think in the end, I'm hoping that everybody sees this as a win right now and that we can continue to have those conversations. I know that the Lake County HRA is interested in meeting with the Two Harbors HRA and I just think there's a lot of things we need to talk through.
And I personally think that based on the meeting that I was in, you know, us working together with the county so far has been really good. And we want to, you know, keep fostering those relationships and eventually, you know, be able to utilize more dollars in our city than if we were to just levy for ourselves. Wouldn't be anywhere near compared to what the county can levy for.
All right. We go into city engineer updates.
Mr. President, good evening, council. Good to see you all. Couple of items on the agenda tonight. First, since the clerk had mentioned the Mid-Not project for Highway sixty-one, we'll start there with communication number one. One thing I wanted to note, we had also discussed with the meeting that we had with Mid-Not last week, that previously the primary two contacts that Mid-Not was working with for the project were the city planner and mayor. Both of whom are no longer available to certain their roles. So we had talked about the council may wish to designate, consider designated one of the council members to serve as someone that can attend, you know, Mid-Not's regular stakeholder meetings they have so that you have a someone that dare listen and have voice at the table for those meetings. So just something for consideration, not somebody along with scientists, a liaison for the Highway sixty-one project. In terms of the update on sixty-one project, there is a memo in your packet and we'll go over that. A couple of updates, Mid-Not's obviously still making progress. We've got the public open house tomorrow night at the high school, four thirty to seven thirty. Mid-Not is planning a presentation. I believe they're planning to give that at about six PM. So open to the public and obviously you're welcome to attend. I'll be attending the meeting too and can answer any questions on from the public on any of the city involvement with the project. One of the things we want to talk to you about for that meeting is the underpasses. As you know, the memo in your packet addresses this, but you guys authorized preliminary sighting and design of underpasses for the potential inclusion in Mid-Not's project. One of Mid-Not's basic position was they're one to consider allowing underpasses in the project, but the city would be responsible for the design of those and for all the work to get them put into the project. But Mid-Not would essentially facilitate if that happened. The two things Mid-Not wanted was they wanted, first, they wanted us to identify the potential footprint of the impact so they can include that in their environmental documentation. We did get get that to them in the middle of August in time for their deadline, so they've gotten information now and are proceeding with that. But we didn't want to give you an update of the actual layout figures and also cost estimates. The cost estimates now are done in preliminary CIP level, planning level cost estimates. We want those to use so that we can put them into the CIP. And also Mid-Not has said that while they won't pay for the underpasses, they will include the 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 cost of the passes in their funding pursuits. So if they will, they're able to secure grant or funding that will cover those underpasses. You know, they're willing to let us ride their coattails essentially on their funding pursuits. So it was important to get those cost estimates done. So we've got the information in your packet tonight and we wanted to review it with you. And then if you're comfortable, we'll provide the information to Mid-Not and we'll also share it at the public open house tomorrow night. So in your package, you'll see at the end of the memo is the flyer from Mid-Not meeting tomorrow night. And then there's the four updates or the four potential preliminary layouts for the underpasses. And to keep the this discussion short, now I'll stop, I'll keep this short so you can ask questions. What we've got is at the west end, we've got one potential underpass at the west end and one potential underpass at the east end. At the west end, we've got narrowed down to two locations. At either location, the culvert would be the or the underpass would be the same size, a fourteen foot wide by fourteen foot high box culvert, which would be large enough to allow ATVs, snowmobiles, and the grooming equipment to pass through. So it would be designated for motorized use. So that's at the west end. Same size culvert, but at one of two locations that we've got narrowed down. At the east side over by Park Road, we've got it narrowed down to the one preferred location where we think the culvert would best be located. But there we've got options open to either do with fourteen by fourteen foot so they could accommodate motorized vehicles. Or we could go with a ten foot high by fourteen foot wide. And then it would be designated for pedestrian bikes and would not be usable for ATVs and snowmobiles. The the figures are laid out in your in your packet. I'd be certainly glad to give you more details if you want or to answer any questions you want. But to keep this brief, I'll just refer to the figures there. Essentially, we've got all the issues like, you know, grades and drainage and those types of things. You know, preliminary really worked out like we would for like a feasibility type estimate. So we've got those figures available for you, options one and two at the west end and then options three and four at the east end. We did put together cost estimates based off of those, so cost estimate for all the extra grading we'd have to do, the utility work we have to facilitate the actual underpass itself and retaining walls to tie them back into the graves, those types of things. And summary cost estimates are included on page two of your memo. Two different tables because the city looks at the cost a little differently than Mid-Not looks at the cost. Mid-Not, all they care about is the construction cost. That's state. That's how they estimate all their projects is construction only. And they want the cost estimate in the year that construction is planned. So they wanted us to give them construction costs in twenty twenty-five dollars. For you, for your CIP, you want current dollars, twenty twenty-two dollars. But you also have to account for the soft costs you'll have beyond construction because you're going to be responsible for the design and for any, you know, potential legal involvement for Eastman acquisitions and, you know, staff involvement for funding pursuits and those types of things. So you want your bottom line numbers that you're planning appropriately for your budgets. So that's why we've got two tables in your memo, based off the same information, just one the way the city looks at the dollars or one the way Mid-Not looks at the dollars. And so a quick summary from table one, the two options at the west end, the total bottom line cost including construction and indirect costs in today's dollars, about two point seven to two point eight million dollars for that underpass at the west end of the city. At the east end of the city, the smaller underpass, the ten foot high, would be about the same price right now with the estimate, two about two point eight million. If that one were the larger fourteen foot high box culvert, price goes up significantly. It's a more challenging design to get that extra four feet of depth there, especially with the top tight confines around the golf course on the north side and the campground on the south side. So that overall estimate for that underpass, the larger underpass would be about four million dollars. So that are the bottom line numbers that we would use for a CIP planning level pursuits now. Now, again, the thing to keep in mind is this is not, you're not committed to this anyway. These are dollars that are going to be given to Mid-Not so that Mid-Not can include them in their project costs as they start their funding pursuits. With the essential thought being that if you can get funding, grant funding to do one or two of these underpasses and it becomes cost effective for the city to do that, then you would pursue the underpasses. If not, and all of this money would have to come out of the city's funds, then it's a lot less likely that these would happen. So again, this is just preliminary numbers now, just for the sake of getting them to Mid-Not and starting to get them into funding pursuits. The only action, no action is needed on this tonight. This session completes the preliminary layout that we were going to work on for you. The only direction I would ask for council is if you're comfortable with us sharing these four figures of the underpass layouts, the two at the west end and the two at the east end. And then also the the potential cost estimates at the public open house tomorrow night. Because at some point, design would need to start at some point in twenty twenty-three, preliminary design. And at that point, we'd need to make a selection of which location at the west end you'd want to have actually have the culvert located at. And also which size you'd want at the east end, if we're going to continue with the design of one or both. So might be good to start getting public, public feedback on which location the public think would work better at the west end. And, you know, is there support at the east end for more of a pedestrian bicycle underpass or a motorized use underpass? So with that, I will stop and see if you have any questions first of all on either the figures or on the cost estimates.
Go ahead, Councilor Erickson.
If we could only afford one, which one do you recommend, the east or the west?
We did, if I can interject, we did talk about this at Public Works a little bit today. This is just my personal opinion. Like I, I'm more in favor of the west one with the snowmobiles. Because on the east side by the golf course, there's not a lot of snowmobile traffic or ATV traffic over there. I mean, you do see, I want to go into town for both or leaving, you see a lot of snowmobiles in the winter. And and the cost, the total right now is what, six point eight million? That's three years of our street improvement projects. Me personally, I would say more towards the west end. I mean, if we could get funding for them, I'm all in favor of doing both. But the money would have to be there. It's a lot of funding.
And then I guess my follow-up question to that, and maybe you talked about that too, is could you clarify again, they they're willing to put the costs in their project and if they are able to find all of the right buckets. But are there certain things about that project that the city would be responsible for no matter what? Because we've already put, we've already paid you for the preliminary. Is that reimbursable? Or is that, we've already said, yes, we're going to do that without?
I would say the cost to date, I would not, I won't think there, I would think they'd be reimbursable.
Okay.
I'd be surprised if we will find something that could reimburse them, but they weren't intended to be reimbursed.
Okay, so going forward though, we can put, is there any, you were saying something about soft costs and some other things?
Correct.
Those are on us over and above. And if they can't find funding, then we're on the hook for deciding that too. But if they were able to find funding, we still might have city investment.
Right, I would think that would be the conservative approach. There there may be funding out there that will cover indirect costs. Sometimes you'll get, you know, certain grant funding or federal funding that will say, we'll cover construction costs plus, you know, X amount of engineering or X amount of design costs or, but sometimes it's like this grant covers construction only and does not cost. You know, so we need to understand it depends on the type of funding and what exactly they cover. I think the conservative approach would be to assume that, yeah, you would cover the indirect costs and funding would cover at least the construction. And in terms of just one more follow-up on the previous question about, you know, we haven't really looked, we were just focused on, let's get the two options laid out so that they're in Mid-Not's and we've still got options on the table. But following up on Councilor Woodrow's discussion, Mid-Not is planning a couple of pedestrian at surface crossings. I mean, we've got the one at Forest Street now with the light. They're also planning one essentially in front of the visitor center where they're going to have a small meeting in median in the middle of the two lanes. Because they're essentially going to have that three lane configuration, which with a lane and a lane and then the twelve foot by two-way turn lane in the middle. While at this location in front of the visitor center, they would essentially convert into a concrete median. And so you'd cross one lane of the highway and then stop and you could take refuge there while you waited for traffic and everyone, then you could cross the rest of the way. So you will have a couple of at surface crossings for pets and bikes, you know, which may, maybe if you think that's enough and it doesn't warrant putting another underpass at that location. But then again, it depends on what you should want that east underpass for. If you want it for snowmobiles and ATVs, you don't have another crossing that location. If you want it for pets and bikes, maybe you consider the other at surface crossings are going to be sufficient.
Thank you. That's helpful and thank you for the comments.
And I think that's what Joe was looking for, whether we were comfortable him presenting this at Mid-Not. I think it is. I think it's important to get public input. I mean, right now with no funding, I'm more in favor, like I said, of the west one, the east one. I don't think there's a lot of snowmobile and and traffic over there. It's too expensive, right? Four million really puts it over the top, but I mean, it's, it'd be interesting to see because there is safety issues that have been arisen. But yeah, definitely more thought needs and discussion needs put into this one.
Patty, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just during some of those earlier views with Mid-Not, there were some members of the snowmobile club present and they also expressed interest in finding funding for that underpass. So I have no idea what amount of funding they have available to them, but, you know, maybe we could highlight some of those other costs. I don't know.
Well, and that's, that's what I was kind of wondering too and going to ask Derek is if there's trail funding for the pedestrian end of things, if there's funding out there to help a lot of the creepy design or something.
I'm sure that there is funding for trail design. There is funding for motorized trail design and so they're actually working on converting the snowmobile into a ATV use also on the east end of town. I was going to say the trees and trails as well, if well, and the motorcycles or each snowmobile representatives agreed that having east end motorized in the west end, non-motorized makes sense. There's really not a whole lot for motorized to do on the west end. Additionally, campground, just not favoring motorized access coming into the campground.
I think you're saying it the other way.
Yeah.
No, but we don't.
Wrong, you smile. Turn everything upside down.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
So you're, can I just, you're concurring with what Public Master said.
Yeah, except he said six point eight, he was automatically putting four million dollars in motorized.
Sure.
That's right, right.
Pedestrian is two point eight and I agree with Joe that there are other options for pedestrian for crossing. And if we had to choose one out of all of them, coming into town, getting a motorized crossing there under the road rather than at grade like it is now is critical.
Thank you.
And I would just say that I would much rather on the east end of town, right down there, see pedestrian for sure because that's, that gets scary down there. Not with just on that?
I did. I had a couple of questions. Joe, how many of the pedestrian quote unquote safe crossings are, has Mid-Not proposed? I know you said there was one by Burlington Day Campground. Do you know of any others that they are proposing? And the reason I'm asking is because as I was looking at the plan and they're putting in that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to call it what I really call it. It's the dead lane where you can turn left or right and just pray to God nobody hits you while you're there. So that's, that really bothered me. So that's why I wanted to know how many, how many of those safe pedestrian crossings and where would those be located?
I'd have to look at their layout again. I don't have their current layout that they showed last week. I just know there was one for sure in front of the the Visitor Center.
Okay.
Because we had talked about that because Jenna had been involved with that discussion.
Right.
We we had that one set up so that you would, it would actually be longer, you would, it'd be a little offset from lane to lane. So you'd cross the one lane, duck the median, and then you'd physically turn and go laterally about ten feet or so and then turn and go across the other lane. So that you actually, you know, if you're in a wheelchair, you could physically turn and see, you know, the the traffic coming at you in the other lane to make sure you have a gap before you cross that other lane. So that one I know for sure, we talked about pretty extensively in the meeting. And then obviously there's the at grade crossing at the signal at Fourth Street.
Fourth Street?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
So standard crosswalks at the, at the signalized intersection. Yeah. I can't remember if there was more.
So Fourth Street, so that would be where Holiday and Station are.
Yeah.
Okay.
As we were saying, there's already a couple, there will be a couple of at grade pedestrian crossings down there when the project's completed.
The other question that I had is as we're, as we're considering one of or both of these adventures, whose responsibility will it be to pursue the grant possibilities? Is that something that we would have to pay you guys for? Is that something that Mid-Not does?
I I think at this point, I think everybody and anybody could be looking at grant funding. Like you say, the, you know, snowmobiles clubs could be looking at grant funding. Mid-Not is going to include it in their pursuits. Certainly the the city could be, you know, contacting, if you've got opportunity, put an application for 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 consideration of bonding, those types of things. The city should be utilizing its avenues as well. I mean, we could certainly assist with any of those if you want. I mean, you have an authorization of that now. We, we certainly could. But any of the normal avenues you can use for going into the bonding funding through legislature, those types of things, it's all fair game at this point.
I know that we can go after the bonding funds, but I guess I was, I was thinking more directly with grants that, you know, who would be the one that would be doing the research on what grants are available?
We do have a government relations person. That's right. So I think we have someone who can help us.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff Harris could help us.
Yeah, he could.
Okay, great. Well, that answers that question. I'm going to just tell you right off the top of my head. If if the council thinks that we should move forward and bring this to the public meeting tomorrow night, I would be very cautious as to how that's presented to the public because if I was sitting there, didn't know anything about this or very little about it, and saw two point seven million dollars and four million dollars, I might have a small stroke.
I I do not have these tables printed on a large board for display. I have the four figures of the layouts printed on boards for displays. I'll just have the cost estimates in case somebody were to ask about, what's this going to cost us and how are we going to pay for it? That's from the question we'll be here.
And I don't have a problem with that because I think it's good to get the public interest input. But I want people to understand that this is a very tentative project at this point. That with everything else that the city of Two Harbors is dealing with right now, this That with everything else that the City of Two Harbors is dealing with right now, this probably wouldn't be at the top of my priority list if it hadn't been for Mid-Not doing this work. So I just want people to know that, you know, we're not trying to break the bank here.
Right, it's, it's an opportunity and it's, you know, it's only gonna be leveraged, really, it becomes cost-effective. Or if you find grant money that, oh, for every one dollar of local money you're putting in, you're getting ten dollars of grant money, you know, so you can essentially get this built at, you know, ten percent local contribution. Then it's something you seriously consider then, because it's cost-effective. But if it's, you know, grant fund doesn't come together for it, the opportunity then of this probably shrivels up.
Well, and, and it does because, you know, as, as counselors, we all know that, you know, people continue to complain about our sidewalks. And now we're looking at two million dollars worth of underground construction. So, you know, I just like to, I just wanna make sure that people understand that this is just tentative, that we just put it in there in case we have the opportunity to fund this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Could you remind me from a timing perspective, this project is 2025?
Correct, they plan to let it in 25 and it'll be a two-year construction, 25, 26.
Okay, and we would, so the soonest that we would be partnering and seeing that would be 2025 or the 26, 27 construction years?
Twenty-five.
No.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
In, in rough terms, their schedule is they could move forward or study them this year.
Yep.
Then they're gonna shift into preliminary design in 2023 and then, and right-of-way acquisition, most interesting.
Okay.
Final design in 24.
Okay.
And then they'll bid it in 25 and they will start construction in 25.
Okay, for 25 and 26.
And then they'll build it in 25 and 26.
Okay. So as we're seeking funding, some of the good news and the bad news is that we're kind of far out, so things that have deadlines, we may not even be able to use some of those because they may have an end date before our start date. So we've got, we can do some good planning, but we may have to be strategic about sharing our story to say we may need to wait. So it's good news and maybe challenging news at the same time because of that, that we're so far ahead of the project. Okay, thank you, that is helpful.
Any other questions for Bill or comments?
No. Consent is that the, the boards with the layout options are okay to share tomorrow night with the right context, of course.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
I agree.
Very good. Okay, good. The other item I have on the agenda tonight is consent number nine, Odegaard Trail. As you know, this, this project's been developing kind of fitfully over the recent history. We did a survey this spring, survey is done, ready to go, web applications were done last year. So all the information is there to do with the design, but with the loss of the planner and kind of the interruption there, things have been moving forward. So we wanted to bring this to your attention tonight for consideration. Our understanding was, the arrangement had been made that Lake County's gonna do their project to resurface Eighth Street next year. And the agreement was, you know, the city's got grant funding for a trail that needs to be used by the end of 2023. So, one of the thoughts was Min-, excuse me, Mid-Not. Lake County, with their A Street project, we're gonna add sidewalk on the west side for those blocks where it doesn't currently exist, which is Thirteenth Avenue to Sixteenth Avenue. So sidewalk costs, you know, of standards with sidewalk costs a certain amount of money. Jennifer Sturbridge had worked with them to get that upgraded to Vituinous Trail for those blocks. So that, you know, you have trail coming down A Street north of Sixteenth Avenue, currently ends at Sixteenth Avenue. So now we would get Vituinous Trail now continued all the way down to Thirteenth Avenue and then turned to connect into the driveway of the parking lot at Odegaard Park. So the city would pay the county for that upgrade from a standard sidewalk to the wider Vituinous Trail, and some of the grant funding would go towards that, but it wouldn't use all the grant funding. So we were looking for a small project to utilize the rest of that grant funding. And the one identified was to extend the trail from the end, now we know where it goes from the underpass underneath the railroad tracks and ends at the west end of Eleventh Avenue, to tie onto it there and continue it up to the gravel parking lot at Odegaard. So then essentially we've got trail coming down A Street to Odegaard Park. We have trail coming up from the underpass under the railroad tracks to the parking lot of Odegaard Park. And the only piece of that left in between would be the connection along Thirteenth Avenue itself, which would be done in the future when Thirteenth Avenue is reconstructed. So the county is, my understanding was agreeable to adding, allowing that addition to that Odegaard Trail from the underpass to the parking lot in their project. But the city would have to design it and give them the plans so they could include it in their, in their construction set for bidding this winter. I don't know if there was an actual formal agreement at this point between the city and the county for that. I'm not sure how far the planning had gotten with the city planner and, and the county highway department. But if we're going, if that still is the plan and we want this trail from the west end of Eleventh Avenue up to the parking lot done and in the county's project, we need to get going on the design. And we've got all the information to do that. So we put together a proposal to do that design. What we've got here is the design work to get it from its current condition to the point where it's ready to be included in the county's plans for bids would be twenty-two thousand dollars. The other twist with this one too is the majority of that trail's gonna be located on CN Railroad property. And I don't know what the current status of permissions from CN is. I know that the planner had, had initial either verbal or email communications with them and it sounded like it wasn't gonna be a big issue. But I don't know that the formal permit process or formal permissions had been obtained. And so, I mean, if, if somebody, and I know you've got a contract planner, now Justin, that's gonna be working the end. If they'll pick up the ball and finish it off or if you're gonna need us to help with that or whatever, so, I did include an allowance of five thousand dollars in there if you do need us to help with the coordination back and forth with the railroad or whatever, so that's in there. Because that, that could be the holdup otherwise, right? If the county's ready to build, bid their A Street project and we don't have the permissions we need for our trail, that trail would have to get cut out of the project, so. That needs to get resolved sooner rather than later if the county's gonna bid the project this winter for construction in 2023. So that's the proposal that we've got put together, essentially twenty-two thousand for the design and then an optional five thousand if you want us to help with the railroad permit process. And again, probably need the city and the county to talk to make sure that we have whatever agreements and arrangements in place to make sure that the, our, our trail can formally be included in their project, assuming we can get our permissions and everything in place.
Go ahead.
So there's two parts to the trail. There's the Sixteenth to Thirteenth, which is an upgrade.
Yeah.
And then there's the, from the railroad tracks, is that running along the track line? So basically is that Ninth Street?
Yeah, in your, in the packet and memo, there was a map of the area we had surveyed.
Okay.
And essentially that, that's where the trail would run. But you're right, there's two parts, the, the part that the county would do along A Street, they're designing that and they're gonna include that in their plan already.
So that could happen.
That, that will happen.
That will happen.
Yeah, and all they need from us is the incremental difference from their sidewalk to the trail.
Okay.
But there probably should be an, need to be an agreement in place to identify that and, you know. So that would be done, but that's, our proposal doesn't cover any of that work because the county's doing that.
Yep.
Our proposal was to design the other piece from the west end of Eleventh Avenue up to the parking lot.
Got it.
Go ahead.
Joe, would it be possible, and I'm, I guess I'm just throwing this out because I, I don't know where we are at with the CN permitting process and if that's even possible, but would it be possible to just extend the trail from where it comes out on Eleventh, is it on Eleventh? Over to Eighth Street rather than going up through the backwoods?
You, you, you probably could, but I would recommend if you're gonna do that, you'd wait until you just reconstruct Eleventh. Because if we build the trail now and let's say you come back in five years or to rebuild Eleventh Avenue and now the grades change.
Eleventh Avenue doesn't want to be rebuilt. They don't want to be rebuilt. They've already told us that.
But that's the problem, if we're gonna go to the effort of putting, I mean, it's taking up adesment to the trail, then we might as well. I mean, that, that's complicated.
Okay, well, I'm just, I, I guess I'm, that's why I'm just wheeling in my brain, trying to figure out, you know, what's more feasible, trying to get permits from CN or getting Eleventh done and connected?
I think the management trail plan, Derek, you might be able to, please. It showed that the preferred corridor running up, essentially.
Up the woods? That's what I call it.
Trees and trails reviewed this and preferred corridor was to run along the railroad right-of-way. There was contact with the railroad, Jennifer, and they indicated that there wouldn't be a problem getting permission to use to draw a trail through that corridor.
We just needed it.
The formal process needs to be.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
And the Eleventh Avenue, I don't know, I mean, we haven't surveyed that, so I don't know if to mean to put a ten-foot-wide Vituinous Trail, if there's room in the boulevard to do that or if it'd be up in people's front yards and you start having easement acquisitions, so. I, if, if you don't wanna do this trail running, I would just, I mean, the purpose of this trail construction would be to utilize the grant funding that you've gotta spend by the end of 23. But if this doesn't come together, I'd say it's probably just, there's no trail that is ready to be done over here.
Okay.
You know, it's this one or nothing right now, but that doesn't mean you have to do this one if, if you're not ready to do it. So. I know that this formal proposal, I mean, this has been talked about at Trees and Trails and I think at Public Works and some other committees. This proposal hasn't gone to any of the committees yet, so it's, it's coming to you now. If you're not ready to act on it, you could always refer it to one of the committees, but, it's just we wanted to get in front of you because, you know, we are getting there by the end of September. To stay on the county's schedule, we'd be able to get the ball rolling if we, if you wanna be part of their project.
Okay. Is the Thirteenth through Sixteenth coming out of a grant or is that from?
Yes, yeah, I can't, right, it was about three, how much did you grant funding, it was three hundred thousand?
One hundred thousand from the Northland Foundation and then one hundred and a half that we, we have earned, got over the last five years.
Yep.
And the county had done a cost estimate of the incremental difference between the sidewalk and the trail, and, and it didn't use up all the grant funding, so there still is some grant funding available.
Joe, how, how long is the trail from Eleventh to Odegaard, about how many feet?
I guess in.
I just wonder how long.
Quarter mile.
Quarter mile, okay, I was gonna say.
So, you mean roughly.
I was wondering what's worth that, like, it's two blocks.
I agree with Robin. Well, I mean, essentially.
Then on that part, that if it's, if it's, if it was only two blocks through the woods, you might as well walk down Eleventh Street and go up. But, yeah, I mean, I was just wondering how long that trail was up there and what's gonna cover, isn't it? That's more beneficial, if, yeah, that's what I mean, it's like actual trail then instead of just a little connection.
I'm looking at the survey right now, I mean, assuming those lots are the standard hundred forty-foot deep lots, there's four lots plus some right-of-way, so yeah, you're probably somewhere around like eight hundred to a thousand feet of, of the trail. With the issue being right now, you know, if somebody rides the trail on a bike or, you know, whatever, underneath the, the railroad crossing, you know, that underpass, they come up, the trail just kind of ends at Eleventh Avenue. So where do they go from there? So this will make a connection at least to get them up to the park where they can utilize the park facilities.
There's a lot of people that look, want that loop closed for people that just walk. And so I'm, I know it seems small, but I do think that will finish that funnel. So I appreciate the work that Trees and Trails has done and I know it seems small, but I think that's gonna be the finish to, yeah.
Because there were discussions about doing a longer trail, like up, along the outside of the ball fields, all the way up to back behind Sixteenth and then coming across on the north side of the ball field. But of course that has to be more expensive and your, your grant fund wouldn't cover that much. And, you know, they were running out before you could find another grant fund, so they kind of came down to what could you do that's affordable with the grant funding you have now? And it was, let's improve the, the upgrade of the sidewalk on, the county's doing on the west side of A Street and then let's make this little connection from Eleventh Avenue to the park and get those, that loop essentially, like you referred, Counselor, to get that loop a little bit closer to connect it.
So.
All right. Well, I love all this trail talk, but I really wanna allow Sean McMahon from SEH a few minutes here to, regards to the airport projects, if we can do that now.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Recording in progress.
This thing keeps starting and stopping, recording.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, my apologies, I was very lonely in the other Zoom meeting room waiting for the meeting to start, so I apologize for the, the delay.
For all that, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for the opportunity to be remote. With me is Sarah Mattis, she's another airport engineer with SEH, we're happy to be here tonight. Working with Miranda through the last previous months, we, we wanted to provide an airport update as we're getting into the CIP season and the FAA grant kickoff season. So we thought it'd be a good opportunity to provide just a very brief update. I know you have a meeting here in a few minutes, so we'll, we'll keep it brief. The first project that we want to update is the AWAS relocation project. And we're going back in time a little bit, approximately one year, where we coordinated an FAA, I'm sorry, a Mid-Not aeronautics grant to relocate what is called the Automated Weather Observation System. It is currently located in the hangar development area and it's being relocated on the other side of the airfield in order to make room for future development. It's a Mid-Not-supported project at seventy percent and Mid-Not actually supplies all of the equipment. So it's a brand-new system in a new location. So as part of that project, we completed a site selection study where we coordinated with the National Weather Service, including the FAA and Mid-Not. So the good news is we found a spot on the airport that the, the AWAS is being relocated to. So the next step in this process before we can bid the project and install the new system is to complete an environmental coordination effort. Since it's on an FAA-obligated airport, we receive money from the FAA to fund your projects. They make you play by their rules, therefore we have to abide by the National Environmental Policy Act or NIPA. So with that is a CATX that is required. So in your packet this evening will be a proposal for SEH to complete the CATX document and, and the associated environmental coordination that goes along with that.
I don't know. No, that's just for the other people. Wonderful world of technology.
Does it have to be recorded? I mean, you don't need to record it for our.
Oh, okay, all right.
Maybe you can take that off?
Recording stopped.
It looks like he's dropped off of there, so maybe he'll come back.
All right, if he comes back, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, apologies. So with that, we have a proposal for, to complete the CATX work. This proposal is funded by Mid-Not at seventy percent and the amount is twenty thousand eight hundred. With that, also in your packet is the remaining schedule to complete the environmental work as well as the design and the eventual construction. And then due to the winter work, will be delayed until essentially spring to complete the environmental work, then design and then tree, tree clearing in the winter conditions the following year. I'll pause there for any questions specific on the AWAS project and the proposal that you'll be considering tonight.
I don't see any questions.
Great, thank you. One other update that is also in your packet is the transfer agreement for entitlement funds. Now we're going back a few years. The airport borrowed money from other communities to build their ten-unit T-hanger out at the airport. It's almost like an interest-free loan from other airports. They borrow that money and then once your FAA money comes back in, a hundred fifty thousand every year, the City of Two Harbors is obligated to pay those communities back. I believe this is the last full hundred fifty thousand dollar payment to the city of Cook. This money was borrowed to pay for that hangar essentially upfront and now is the time to, to repay that money to, to cook for their project when they're undergoing some, some future things. So a pretty standard practice within the airport community to kind of transfer those. So pretty standard practice within the airport community to kind of transfer those entitlements so the money stays in Minnesota and allows you to complete your project in advance of banking up all that money. I know we've, we've handled these transfers before, but for those that are unfamiliar, I'm happy to answer any questions there may be.
Any questions? Doesn't look like there's any, Sean.
And the last quick, very quick update in your packet is the CIP, which hovers the next approximately 30 years of projects at the airport. It is, we've been meeting with FAA and the airport staff and the airport commission over the last three or four months to kind of fine tune what the projects look like. It highlights different funding sources that are available, both typical FAA money, the new infrastructure money, which would be in the purple column, as well as state-funded projects. And just very briefly, looking up for this next year in 2023, the project, the airport commission is moving forward with recommending is replacing the airport beacon. That would be funded with infrastructure, you know, the bipartisan infrastructure law money. And then also there is an application for a new terminal so as the, a part of the FAA program is to replace aging terminal facilities or replace or repair aging terminal facilities. So we're working with the airport commission on a potential application for that project over the next year or two. And then looking forward to 2024, it's all about pavement maintenance and reconstructing or repairing existing pavements, both in the taxi lane building area as well as a larger taxi, taxiway reconstruction effort at the airport. I'm happy to answer any questions on the, this CIP at this time and, or future plans at the airport.
Doesn't look like there's any questions, Sean. Thank you.
Well, that, yeah, that concludes my, my airport updates. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Any questions overall, otherwise I'm, I'm happy to be here.
Thanks.
I think we're good. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, are there any other agenda questions or additions? Go ahead, Counselor Bass.
Yeah, like number 19 removed from the consent agenda.
Move to new business. Yep.
Soil lock, that's actually.
Not a problem. That'll be new business number five. All right, any other additions or changes? If not, look for a motion to adjourn the committee to hold meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.